Okay, well, thanks everyone for taking time out of their busy schedule to to join the co-op and engage, give us your thoughts, your feedback. We have a few things to chat about today. But as always, I'd love to give the tech update first. Row, are you ready with the tech update?
Yes, I am. So we have had good progress this week. The we are expecting to have the next release, the L L B M release with block merge and the finalization with simple protocol. We're going to call it Alpha four for now, but later this week is when we're expecting that release to be available on the test net. Both Thomas love and not zipper are working on this basically right now. They're integrating their work. So it should be ready later part of this week. Now, once this release is done, there is still a little bit of work that needs to be done in terms of handling invalid blocks, implementing some slashing rules, and of course, a lot of testing. So that's a work that still needs to continue. But the core of the L L B M, both the block merge and the finalization movement of the finalization fringe. All of that will be part of this Alpha four release. The team, the rest of the team is kind of heavily gearing itself to do the necessary testing, right? You know, helping with writing tests and all that type of stuff. And so Stas Max and possibly Dennis will be joining that effort. In addition to the the L L B M work, we have the other stream of work going on in the bonding area that Will has been working on. So his PR is nearly or should soon be ready for review. He's got some final cleanup and mind adjustments to be made to the PR. And there will be some testing that is needed. Then the other thing that we're doing in that space in the validators, external validators area is to there was a request or suggestion from Dan Conley a while ago about creating a separate rev address for rewards to validators. I think he promised that he will join the session tomorrow, so we'll have some requirements clarification there. But that task, if it is simple enough that it all it is, is to say, send rewards to a different dev address, that should be something that we can do. If it seems like there is not clarity or involves too much, we will take a call on that after the meeting tomorrow. As to what needs to be done and when. So that's the other part in terms of getting ready for external validators and enabling bonding from external validators, that work is going on. Dennis also will be supporting testing effort, but he's temporarily switching to support parsing in rolling for an external customer at the moment. There is another piece of activity that I talked about last week that we're substantially going to enhance the error reporting, error handling framework. Right now, it's all very much driven by, you know, you need to know how to read the logs and spend a lot of time reading the logs. So we're going to try to make that as user friendly as we can at this point in time, and there'll be probably future enhancements later, but at this time, at least we want to take a first cut at how we can improve error reporting and error handling so that a lot of that work happens in a decentralized manner whereby, you know, an end user can see what they have done wrong. Validator can see what's going on and may perhaps fix some issues on their own. So those are the kind, that's the motivation behind this is to say, let's put out as much information as we can about errors so that any party that can handle those can take care of that themselves, so that what's filtered up to the team is is minimized. And then this way, the team can be focused and resilient in responding to issues that are real issues as opposed to having to investigate everything that gets filtered. So that's the other thing. And I know Gurinder has got everything ready on AWS. I'm not sure. I know he was working on enabling the nodes on AWS. I'm but it green is here. Gurinder. Is that done or is that still in process at this time?
I'm sorry, which one are you asking?
The 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 AWS, the
For for test set or for the dazzle?
No, no, I'm just talking about the testnet is there, right?
Right, test that is there, right? Yeah. So it's still in work in progress right now.
Okay. All right. So that work is continuing with AWS. We will be cutting out or switching to that soon. The one other thing that's not written down here, but I will add that item. The RPC team has submitted one PR to enable string split as a function in rolling. For you know, for example, a CSV type of file or some something else, perhaps a comma delimited or comma separated fields, if there is something like that in a value or it could be a URL. If you wanted to process that and you know, get the different parts of it, this as the the PR is calling it now feature explode, but basically it is a string split feature. So the team is looking at that and that will probably also be merged when this release comes out. There are some minor comments there that folks need to work on. But that's that will be enabled in there. Now, in that area, there's a whole lot of other things that people were asking for. There were art chips for reg X regular expressions in rolling. We're not doing anything with that at the moment, but we will maybe take a look at that in the second half. Depending on the priorities there. So but that's 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 the other piece that will be included in the release that's coming out. So that I think is the is the primary part of the tech update. There was some chatter in the in the Discord channels that that it's not a blockchain until there are external validators. I agree with that sentiment. But as of now, sometime, I mean, if everything goes well with these releases and testing does not identify any catastrophic issues. The expectation is that the external validators should be live in July, hopefully latest in August. So it that's my response to Dan Conley's comment that, you know, if you don't have external validators, it's not, it's not a blockchain. That's kind of where we are on that, but we should be, we're, we're getting there is basically where we are with that. That I think is the end of my update. I'll take any questions or comments.
I have a question about the rolling parser that Dennis is working on. Is it going to some, this is something that's going to be merged upstream like on the main network or is it just for the customer?
Oh.
As a client.
It's not a rolling. So Dennis is not working a rolling parser. Dennis is working on a parser for a little niche language. So that was developed by a company that does data mapping tools.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's completely, completely different.
Yes, it's different. I should rework. I should perhaps put some clarity on that. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be only for that for the particular customer, meaning it's a very niche use case. So, yeah.
Because I already added the rolling parser in rolling and it seems to work okay, although like is this kind of like a security issue with because you don't want to allow like arbitrary rolling code to be parsed. So I still have some work to do on that.
Well, actually, what would be even better is to have rolling as a target of BNFC. So you you write your, you write your grammar and BNFC and one of the, one of the languages that it spits out is rolling. And that's, that's definitely on the on the plate for future releases, but it is not mission critical at this time. But I will say that there are some significant opportunities here because rolling does things concurrently. And so parallel parsing becomes this very, very interesting. You know, technical opportunity has lots and lots of fun stuff for that. So 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 stay tuned on that particular topic because it's a, it's, it's for those, for those people who are into technical stuff. That's a lot of fun. Yeah.
So Theo, whatever you're doing, I'm not sure if you can cast it in that, in that light, the way Greg is describing.
My use case is mostly like verifying the rolling contract when it's being executed. So whenever someone deploys a contract, it parses it like it becomes sparse so that you can actually compare it to the actual source code and see what's being executed.
So for that one, the existing rolling parser is available in Java. So you can just poke it up through. So you could, you could make that available as a special function and rolling.
Yeah, that's exactly what we've done, Greg.
Okay, so that is not a problem whatsoever.
Yeah, this is that. So what Theo is talking about is work that is directed towards the idea of programmable storage. So that you want to understand what contracts are associated with a given file store. And in order to do that, we need to be able to present the rolling to you. And then when the rolling is ultimately executed, we want to verify that you're executing what is actually on store. Does that make sense?
Not really, because the validators are already doing that.
Okay, well, I maybe we could have a conversation about this, but I do think it's actually necessary. Maybe I'm not describing it correctly.
Okay, well, yeah, I'd love, love to talk, talk it through, but let's, let's do that on a different call.
Sure.
Cool, cool, cool. All right. Any other questions for Rao? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Rao, and a big hats off to the team. I know they're working very, very hard on on the block merge. So that's fantastic. Moving, moving forward. The board, the the board has made a lot of decisions yesterday. So let me get to those. First and foremost, you will find that there's a board resolution for a special meeting. This, the special meeting itself is really just the vote, but there will be educational meetings regarding the vote held on held, held on the first of July. So at the, the times that we normally hold the closed door sessions, we will be using those sessions to provide educational you know, sessions about the vote itself. So the, the, the language for the votes is already up. There's a special Discord channel for for information about the votes. These votes are mission critical to the co-op. It is absolutely essential that you read and understand the items of business under consideration. And this is directly, directly related to conversations that we've been having in closed door sessions, which I will not get into here. But but please take a look at the language. We have reviewed the active member status. And the the board made it clear that as of this year, you needed to have voted to be, to have your, the requirements for active status be deferred. If you have not voted in the recent elections, so the October elections, then you must fulfill the requirements for active status specified in the bylaws. So specifically, if you have not voted as of the October elections to to be in active status and therefore eligible to vote, you must pay your $10 of active status fee. And you can, that can be paid either with Rev or via Stripe. If you have any questions about that, again, there is a special channel on Discord for people to, to take a look at. Please, please, please take a look at this. This is absolutely critical. This is mission critical to the co-op. If you, you know, in case you haven't heard me say it, let me say it one last time. It is mission critical to the co-op that these votes be conducted. And so if, if you, in order to vote, you must be a member with active status. In order to be a member of active status, you must have one of two things happen. Either you voted in the October elections or you pay your active member status fee. Any questions about that?
How does that affect people who have joined since the last election?
If they joined since December, since January 1st, they are automatically active members until the next year. If they joined in the interim between October and January, then they must activate their membership again via the active member fee. So there's a Discord chat, as we mentioned before, there's a Discord channel. And Ian, you want to provide any additional color on this?
Yeah, actually, from the website, that's the join the co-op link. That's $20. There's a, there's a separate link for renewal. And so I think just through, through the, through Discord, if you just say you want to re-up your, your membership, we can send that link out to you and
Maybe we could also add the renewal onto the page that I just put in the chat, which is the page that has the information that Greg just said. Maybe there could be a button there for renewal as well.
Can do, but also want some notification in Discord, just so people see that it's happened and can can jump to it.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. Both solutions are fine. Row.
I do want to say, I just checked and I saw that Ian's email went into my trash or spam folder in the yesterday. So some people may be having a problem with that. I did go ahead and mark it not spam. I don't know if that helps with Google or not.
Same thing happens for me to me. I checked and it went into my spam and I marked it does not spam.
And the email came from membership at our chain co-op, which I believe everyone should have used in the past. It shouldn't be spamming. That's the official email for, for all the cop notifications.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but it's definitely a
It is going into spammy. And so I mean, maybe it's the number of emails that went out, or I don't know what criteria.
I think a lot of notifications from anything end up going to spam regardless of where they come from. So.
Yeah, because it does go out, you know, thousand emails. It might get ranked as spam as possible.
Yeah, that's possible. That's possible. All right. So you're, as a member, please take it as your solemn duty and obligation to alert other members that you think might not have heard this message. This is very, very important, mission critical to the co-op. Please alert any member of the co-op that you know about, that you think might not have heard this call to action. It is absolutely vital that we have this vote. The vote itself will occur on, what did we say? The third? Beginning on the third, closing on the fourth. Is that correct? Did I get the dates right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so please, please get yourself all set up so that you can vote. We want everyone's voice in the co-op to be heard. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity. The Fourth of July is American Independence Day. Is that going to perhaps disturb some American voters?
They can all vote on the third.
All right.
Okay, um. All right. So with with that, I will move on to other other items. Just trying to think what will be said in the closed door sessions versus what will be said here. There are some key closed door session discussions that we need, we need consideration on. I can't say them here, but it also involves the entire membership. So please, if you, if you have the moment on, on Friday, either at the 11 o'clock time slot or the six o'clock time slot, Pacific daylight time, please do, please do join those because we do have additional items to, to discuss there. Let's see, what else do we have? While I'm, while I'm reviewing it, why don't, why don't I go ahead and turn it over to Daryl for the weekend review and then I'll get back to other items of business. Daryl, are you ready?
Yes. So here's the weekend review from June 16th to June 22nd. Last Friday in the climate and coordination our cast, we discussed climate disinformation, disastrous flooding in Yellowstone National Park and the potential lives that can be saved through climate action. We also discussed the state of our chains tech and the recent breakthrough demo. On Monday in the Casper stand up, I hope I have this right, Greg. Monday's Casper stand up covered Thomas love's latest PR for block merge.
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay.
He walked us through, oh, you know, sort of where he is and the, the, the main things that he and nut zipper had discussed just prior to the call. Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. On Tuesday, let's see, I wasn't able to attend that call. It looks like Nora and Raphael had a working session on the website.
Yeah, basically, we just are finding anything that is not functioning or has a typo or is a bad link or anything like that, fixing it. Just want to make sure the website is in the tip top shape for the next era of the co-op. So basically just fixing any issues mostly.
Nice. Thanks, Nora. This morning in the active member hangout, we talked about Jim's computer. It was, it was a very multi dimensional call. Quantum physics wise. So we talked about Jim's computer issues and his post surgery rehab process. And then we started talking about unitarian church philosophies, which led to a discussion on Christianity and data around the historical Jesus, which happens to be a, a, a hobby topic of mine. And then Jim gave a fascinating angle around quantum entanglement that blew my head off. And, and here we are right now. Back to you, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you, Daryl. I appreciate that. All right. So I want to mention that as a part of the go, go to market or press release on the, on the, the recent demo that Theo gave last week. I, I wrote an article with our consultant Ralph Banco that article went to several members of the Capitol Hill community and potential investors and has been picked up for publication in a, a bigger venue. So the draft that I put up on Medium, I've, I've taken down because it's going to be picked up by a, a bigger publication. Once that, once that publication is live, we'll be putting the, the links out. You know, on Twitter and then other things. But but essentially, you know, this community has heard me make the points. But but it bears repeating. It is no longer possible for people to be claiming that our chain doesn't scale. What we, what we have very, very clearly demonstrated is that video data can be stored on chain and, and streamed from chain. The R drive capabilities is a nice one because it effectively serves in the same role that, that the same kind of file system shim that Dropbox uses to make its internet storage capabilities available and, and look like a file, a local file system for Dropbox stored resources on people's machines. So if you're, if you're familiar with Dropbox or, or other kinds of file sharing services that offer this, you can think of our drive in a similar light, although one of the key differences, and I think this is what Bill and Theo were, were basically alluding to earlier in our conversation, because our chain is more than just a storage medium. It's also programmable. There are lots and lots of things that can be done over and above simply sharing your files. And we'll be begin to see some of that in the not too distant future. But the main point right now is just that you can no longer, people can no longer claim that our chain doesn't scale. However, I also think that the community needs to understand that main net has been intentionally throttled. Right? The whole point of the round robin deployment capability is connected to the point that I have made over and over again about Ethereum and the DAO bug. What saved Ethereum was the fact that it was running at seven transactions per second. So because they were slow, that terrible awful bug, they had, they had time to address it. Likewise, our chain has, has had a very deliberate policy about keeping main net throttled. Yes, we want to roll out other features and there are features that we don't want. We don't want main net to be running without, at speeds without those features. But it is absolutely vital for people to understand that, that because this is a live financial service over which millions of dollars of transactions per week have been running for years. It is critical that we keep it slow in case there are any bugs that we haven't caught and we have time to fix them. Does that make sense to people? Do people understand what this is all about?
Um, yeah. And would you like that most recent writing? I know it's going to be published elsewhere, but do you want it on the blog too? Or do you think we should just wait for where it's going to be published elsewhere?
We're, we're going to wait. Yeah, we have, we have, there are strict, there are strict policies about not published anywhere else.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But just so people know, if they haven't seen already, that demo that Greg is talking about is the most recent entry on the blog, which I put a link to in the chat. So if anybody wants to see it.
Awesome.
I've actually published a tweet recently where I use Star Drive along with an open source Netflix like streaming platform and streaming the week like a trailer of, of a movie in, on this platform.
Nice. Can you, can you drag the co-op in that and then maybe the co-op can retweet it?
Sure.
Yeah, or you could just send us a link, but Greg, do you think we, the co-op could retweet that?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay, good. Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Fantastic.
Maybe show a small demo now if you have time. I'm currently uploading this file, so.
Absolutely.
Here is a tweet and the, the video playback is seems slow and laggy because it's of this, of the recording software. I'm not sure who it will actually play out and zoom. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah. So, so to be clear about what Theo just said, any Yeah. So, so to be clear about what Theo just said, any lag that you see in this video replay is not the result of our chain. It's the result of the recording, recording software.
That just stopped as the upload process, so it's wait for it to finish. So it's just 15 megabyte file. It's not, not, not too large, but soon, soon we will actually upload like the entire video. That's kind of the goal. At least when we have LBM, so everyone have to wait too long.
Yeah, absolutely. So what, while this is going, I've also been sort of canvassing folks who are are very intelligent, but not really tech savvy at all to see, you know, what they get from articles like the one we just wrote. And it, it's clear that there's, there's another level of explanation of value prop that we still have to do. So, so I'm, I'm working, I've, I've written a very, very short article to, to help, help identify the, some of the value propositions for, for people who are kind of at, at that level of a technical understanding. Are we about there, Theo?
Should take a bit longer.
Okay, no worries. It's not a problem, not a problem. So, so I'll, I'll just, just outline the, the key points of that article, which I think, you know, I'd love to get feedback on. So, so the, the first, the first point is I think everyone recognizes the value of file sharing services like Google Drive or Dropbox, but also SoundCloud, which is essentially a file sharing service that's really focused on audio data. And Bandcamp, which is likewise really just a file sharing service. But, but that's focused on audio data. Right? So, so those kinds of services have been the, the value of them, it has been clearly established. And, but it's also very, very clear that they that, that your data is not really not really neutral in the sense that, that, that when you upload it to these companies, they are harvesting things out of your data and selling them on to other companies. And so that your data is not yours if it's, if it's being stored behind the firewall of a private company. It's just, that's just a fact. Likewise, it turns out that, that file sharing is not the only kind of data sharing, right? So, so email and social media are also really just data sharing applications. So if Theo, please just interrupt me when, when you're, when you've got notification.
Just any second now.
Okay, sure. No worries. So, so you can, you can think of your, you can think of your, all, all of your email messages. That's really data that, that is being hosted for you by, you know, companies like Google in your, for Gmail or, or Yahoo mail or whatever service you're using. And the same is true for your social media feed. That's really data that has, that is being hosted for you or on your behalf by companies like Twitter and Facebook. So all of those data sharing services can potentially be replaced by something as scalable as our chain. But the difference is that instead of the servers being owned and run by Google, they can be owned and run by the community. And that makes a huge difference because those services have, have become a part of our information backbone. So the one way I describe it is those are information utilities and that are vital to social functioning now. And just like your, your, the gas companies and the water companies and the electric companies are public utilities, certain information utilities need to be public utilities, or at least there needs to be a public alternative to private offerings. And blockchain, or at least blockchains that scale like our chain does, makes this possible. Alright, let me stop there and check in with you, Theo.
We're, we're all done. We're all ready to go.
Over to you.
So I've just uploaded this simple trailer, which is like about a minute, and we're gonna watch it, not using VLCs this time, but we're going to use an open source platform called Jellyfin. That's right. So I'm going to close this application, copy master register, right? So I'm gonna clear any cache that's in the program. So all the data is going to be pulled from the chain. There we go. And I'm going to run this. So this, this is my local installation of Jellyfin. And what I'm going to do now is going to dashboard, libraries, and add the media library. I'm going to say movies. And as a folder, I'm going to point it to my R drive. I can entire pass to where it's mounted. Okay. And then and on our graph, you will actually see so it's currently like reading contents of files, like only headers. So it's not reading, reading entire files yet. It's just discovering. There we go. You can see like what, what chunks it has read so far, mostly just to generate thumbnails. So when we go to my home, movies, we now have the single trailer. We can press play. And as soon as I press play, you see it's reading more stuff. So it's currently streaming data from chain. How was the playback?
That was pretty impressive, to be perfectly honest. What's the movie?
It's a simple, it's made by Blender Foundation. So it's kind of like a, a free movie. So we have, we, we can actually show it.
Oh, sweet. Very nice. That's cool. Great demo. Any questions for Theo?
So Theo, so is this the, the chain that it's playing from, is this from the RPC main net or, or from where?
Currently on my, on my dev net.
On your dev net?
So we're currently still setting up the test net for this. And we, we might actually go with Alpha four. I don't know. You, we should probably talk with Bill on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the final configuration of the test net for this is, is yet to be determined. The, the hope is by the end of the week to have the demo that you just saw working off of preliminary test net in RPC. And based on that experience, we will tune the test net for memory CPUs and such things. And, and get a proper test net up, running this demo.
Cool.
Fantastic. Very good. Love to see it.
And as people have pointed out that it's actually not just files, it's like programmable stories. So all of this file is actually an NFT that can be sold and bought. So we can actually demonstrate that. Just close this. I'm just going to replace the private key. Here.
But while Theo is doing this, I, I would like to say that so the experience that you're seeing here right now is pre LLBM. This experience that you're seeing, the performance that you're observing only becomes faster when LLBM is out. And RPC will be moving forward to that very, very quickly, once it's, once it's released.
And everything just gets faster as more and more generations of hardware come out. So
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I, 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 you know, like, I'm, I'm super, super psyched about all the things that the co-op will be doing to make the core protocol faster. It's going to be wonderful. But that's all going to be like dwarfed by what's happening with the, uh, future generations of hardware. So I mean, you can only expect this to get better and better and better. And I want to point out that as far as I know, there is no other chain architecture that will have this, this property. So that as, as the further and further generations of hardware architecture come out, that, that your code will just get faster. There's no other chain that has that, has that power. So, so it's really, really important for people to understand what our chain was designed for. It was designed for this generation of hardware advances, the ones we're, we're experiencing now and will, will continue to experience it at an accelerating rate.
Alright, so I currently created a, a different user and call him buyer. And now I want to run, going to my buyer folder and run this command to essentially find my, fund my balance with five ref, which is actually currently the price of this NFT of this movie. So once I run that in, in Arnold log, we should see a deploy coming in. There we go, which runs the credit operation on our chain token and funds with five ref. Now, once that's done, oh, we can actually just purchase this file. I'm going to open another, another window. Going to Taylor's folder where the file was uploaded originally. And I'm just going to drag and drop this into bias folder. And we, we get a swap deploy, which essentially swaps five ref for this NFT. So we successfully purchased this trailer. And now it's in our possession.
That is amazing. That is amazing. I know, I, I
So, so I'm just, I'm just going to jump in here and say real quick that what you're watching here in terms of the drag and drop purchasing, this, this will by, I don't know, maybe October, certainly by the end of the year, this will completely integrate with an online marketplace. So you get your choice. You can go with an OpenSea web based marketplace or you can just drag and drop and stuff and, and buy it. All of this is, is being integrated.
Fantastic. This is great news. Now, I, I want to be clear that like even in this demo, there are legal ramifications, right? So essentially Theo mented as his own, something that already has a license that is governing it. And so while
That's rare.
Exactly. No, no, no. I mean, the, the demo was brilliant. And, and these kinds of questions that I'm about to raise are important questions that, that are, that we're going to have to deal with both as businesses and as a culture, right? So, so from a, from a, from a business point of view, there are all kinds of legal checks that will have to be done. So in order to make RPC a full business or to, in order to enable any marketplace like, like OpenSea or anything else to utilize this technology, there has to be an additional set of technology that is checking, not just at the first upload, but at regular intervals. You know, you know, is there some claim out there that says, oh, this was the person who uploaded or minted this NFT did not actually have the rights to do that? But this is where a lot of the programmable aspects of, of our chain becomes super, super valuable, right? So when an NFT is dropped into a folder or when an asset is dropped into a folder, that can go and trigger license checks, right? And then we can, we can integrate in with existing IP checking capabilities, right? So Google has some, some fairly sophisticated IP checking capabilities in terms of YouTube and, and, and many other, you know, offerings have those kinds of IP checking capabilities that we can either license or integrate with, or we can partner with those businesses. And the programmability of our chain to begin to handle a lot of that legal apparatus is again, something that sets our chain apart from the other offerings and especially the other NFT offerings. Does that make sense to folks?
You know, just to follow on with that, Greg, I mean, this is all the digital rights management stuff. And RPC has been focused on that from the beginning. So, you know, when we talk about programmable storage in version two of the R drive, which you're looking at version one here. And version two is all about digital rights management and, and all of that integration that you're referring to.
Yep, a, a, absolutely, absolutely. And it's because of the underlying platform's core features. Like we have been thinking about exactly these kinds of business cases for a very long time. And that's why the technology is able to move so quickly now that the platform is at a certain level of, of maturity. Right? Because we've anticipated these business cases, these are the ones we were going after. And now they're, they're here. We're ready to start executing on these kinds of business cases. So I think the community should be super, super excited. I know I am. Alright.
Just a note, after I purchased this, this NFT, this trailer, it is, it's now gone from this media library. So it's no longer in possession of the previous user. So.
That is awesome. That is so cool, right? Real digital scarcity, right? That's, that's, that's what we're talking about here. It's just, it's, it's like a dream come true, right? Okay, with that, I know we're about six minutes from the top of the hour. Let's, let's see if there are any questions, comments, concerns, considerations from the community. Awesome. Well, I, I thank everyone very much for your time, your attention. We are officially into summer, so please get out and enjoy the summer. It's, it's, it's 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 this seasonal awareness is a vital part of what it means to stay human. And please also stay safe and we will see you on the other side.